Ryan, he was a retired state trooper, but you know, he didn't work directly for the village, but he did serve 24 years as the town assessor or as a town assessor, which serves as the village's assessing authority. So I just wanted to note that. And thank, recognize his many years of service here to the community. So with that, Joel.
Thank you. If you want to take one.
So I want to note something as well. Usually I know you guys meet on the second Tuesday. I was here for three hours until about midnight. No, I'm just kidding. A little bit of humor.
Is anybody else here?
No. Thought I'd start out with some jokes.
So when did you find out we're in the wrong place?
I decided, no, enough joke. The, I wanted to invite you all and everybody here and in TV land. We're doing our second Repair Cafe. Gary Kenton over there is a big reason why the first one is a success, and I believe this one as well. Bruce Washburn and I got a bunch of tables. Recently transported over to, from the high school to the town hall. And so if you have broken lamps, computers, bicycles, furniture, electrical appliances, clothing, toasters, musical instruments, electrical items, bring them down to Reinbeck Town Hall just across the street this Saturday, the 26th, from noon to 4:00. We've got a whole bunch of great folks who are going to fix them. Wonderful people like Bob Wyatt and Bob Roush from the Town Highway Garage. And again, it's because of Gary and Jess Scott, actually, of the Conservation Advisory Board for the town as well. Really, I mean, some of, some of the people are my friends, but a lot of it is, is Gary and Jess's efforts. So I just thought I'd put that out there. Repaircafe.org. We're doing our second one. A lot of people came out to the first one this Saturday, the 26th, noon to 4:00 p.m. And yeah, the wheel abrader just took over running the Duchess County incinerator. A lot of people like myself and Tom Mannix were hoping to sort of, instead of having a contract with another company to run the county incinerator, sort of phase out, you know, shut down the incinerator. That's not happening, but one little teeny tiny way, maybe we can move towards zero waste and increase recycling and composting and save stuff from the incinerator in the landfill is to have this Repair Cafe. So that's that. Also Thursday, August 7th, at, I don't know when, it'll be like 4:00, 5:00, 6:00. For about a decade, some people have been trying to kill or savagely weaken the item pricing law in Duchess County. And I'm maybe the biggest reason why we still have it in Duchess County. You can go to the Stop &amp; Shop on Route 9 here in Reinbeck. You can go to any supermarket. And the law is, there's supposed to be prices on each item and prices on, on all the items. And so many times it's been put on the agenda and pulled. I know this may not be a big issue to a lot of you, but we're still in the worst recession we've been in for the last 70 or 80 years. UFCW has pointed out, Maine, I'm sorry, Massachusetts, Michigan, all across the country, whenever these item pricing laws are repealed or weakened, the supermarket chains lay off workers. And I'm 50 years old. I cannot memorize the prices of the items. You know, they say, well, it should just be good enough to have the, you know, the scanners in the aisles, and then we're supposed to believe and trust that those aisle scanner prices are going to be the same at the front of the checkout. I don't always trust that. So it's a teeny tiny thing, but to me, it's a big thing. And so if you care about it one way or the other, there's going to be a vote on it. There's probably, at least going to be discussion on it. That's Thursday, August 7th. Just wanted to point that out. You probably saw front page articles in the Freeman and the Journal about thousands of people being shut off. And you know, last time I checked, this is not a third world nation. This is a first world nation. So I've, I've worked with John Masurgen of Central Hudson over the last decade on a lot of different issues, sometimes closer than others, sometimes we butt heads. I've asked him to provide to me a list of, you know, at least how many people, how many homeowners were shut off in the village of Reinbeck, in the town of Reinbeck, in Clinton. He has not been forthcoming with that list. So I hope to bring that to you. Because I have a feeling it's not just Dover or Beacon or Poughkeepsie. I have a feeling that may be happening right here in Northern Duchess. You don't usually see Bill Larkin blazing a trail of environmental protection, but I just saw in the Poughkeepsie Journal, and this is an issue that eight of us, the Democratic Caucus, have been very strong on, in February and March, weren't able to get anybody else to sign on to it. But this issue of the oil trains, many times each week, you know, the Poughkeepsie Journal's done a lot of work on this, John Farrell and John Penny right here in Reinbeck. It's a big issue. The oil trains, the oil barges coming up and down the river. As, as Bill Larkin, Republican State Senator from across the river, pointed out, Canada has banned the DOT 111 trains. Would not be a bad idea for us to do the same. Last year in Quebec, 47 people died after a big accident. And a lot of that crude oil that back in tar sands crude is, is coming up and down the river. That it didn't, it didn't used to be like that, so I just thought I'd point that out. The only thing I was going to say is, I voted yes to Owen Rafter, who's a good person, to be the planning commissioner for Duchess County. I know that for the last 11 years I've served as county legislator, many, many times, John Clark and other people from the Duchess County Planning Department have worked really closely with the village of Reinbeck. I would just say, I'm a little bit, I'm wondering why before the vote, before all 25 of us had a chance to vote on Owen Rafter being the planning commissioner for the county or not. He made a commitment that they were going to release a draft proposal for a solarized program in Duchess County. Genesee County has it, Topkins County, Madison County, 75% cut in solar bills. So you take a 5 kilowatt residential solar system, usually costs 20 grand, take it down to five, to five grand. And then after, I, I indicated I was going to vote, after all 25 of us voted it, the announcement came down on high, no, the county's not going to do a solarized program. So I just want to point out to you, in Danby, in Calera, in Caroline, and a number of places, it, it happens on a town level. And I know this may happen on a Northern Duchess alliance, but I live in the town of Clinton, so far be it for me, I'm not trying to tell you what in the village of Reinbeck to do, but I would love it if the village of Reinbeck were to be the first municipality in Duchess County to have a solarized program. And it's just bulk purchase of solar, just banding together neighbors. Just go to solarizemadison.com, solarizeneyork.org. That's it. Happy summer, everybody. I'm at 876-248-8453-2105. Bring your beloved but broken items to be fixed. Repair Cafe this Saturday, noon to 4:00, Town Hall.
Thanks, Joel. We juggled the schedule a little bit here tonight. We're going to go to the tree commission report. They put together a report for us. Basically, we were looking at a long-term plan of tree replacement in the village in terms of species and tree wells and sidewalk construction around them to improve the long-term survivability of the trees. And right now, we have a project in front of M&amp;T Bank. We have an accessible crosswalk going in, and after that's done, the property owner is going to be replacing the sidewalk in front of there. So we had asked for a report from the tree commission in regards to, to the long-term plan, as well as specifically to the trees at that location, because of the concern that they may be damaged during the construction of the sidewalk. So we have a couple of members of the tree commission here tonight. Do you want to give us a brief summary, Cecily?
So I hope everybody got the paper that says revised at the top, because it has the correct numbers instead of the incorrect numbers. So the locusts, which are our primary street tree in the core of the village, are not very healthy and beginning to die, or certainly trending that way. So this opportunity came up to perhaps take out one or two trees and replace them with something new to try them out. So we chose what is called a zelkova to see a large group of, we have them around, we have planted them in the village, not this particular variety, but we have planted them. If you want to see a large group on Route 9, south of Poughkeepsie, in the median, across from Coyote Cafe, those are, those are zelkovas, to see what they look like. We picked a particular variety, which is called wireless, because it's below the wires and would never need to be pruned by Central Hudson, and therefore will stay looking very nice. They are very wide, though. And one of the problems that we have, not so much in front of the bank, so, so this paper, this report that we did was sort of two-parted, because what's in front of the bank is a much bigger space, more space for trees there. In the rest of the village, in the core, there's very, very little space for trees. So what we would like to do is buy a product that's, that was invented at Cornell University called CU, Cornell University Structural Soil. And it's a special kind of material that leaves a lot of particle space between the rocks and the gravel to allow the roots, the water, the oxygen to, to move around the tree and for the tree to move into that space, so that it doesn't come up to the surface and lift the sidewalk. That's the primary reason sidewalks crack and break, is that the tree roots are looking for what they need to survive. If we give them this specialized soil, they will stay where they should. They will go down into it and get everything they need. So it's a, it's a great idea. The only question is the cost. It is relatively expensive, but I think in the long run, it will save a lot of money. It will save redoing the sidewalks. It will save the tree itself, living much longer life. These locusts here, I think, are about 25 years old. I don't know if anybody knows exactly, about 25 years. And a locust should live, you know, 300 or 400 years. It's a very long live tree. There were trees along Mill Road that they took out when they put in the new part of the cemetery. Those were 300-year-old locusts. And they still would have gone on if they could have. So if we were to use this specialized soil, the trees would live much longer than they do now. It's a tremendous stress on a tree to live in the environment that they, they live in a little, tiny hole with very little water and almost no oxygen. So this paper, this is a lot of the, you know, that really detailed explanation and some really good graphics that I got from Cornell University, that you can see how it would work, and pretty easy to see. The, these are the costs. So we tried to follow the village code on the, the thickness of the sidewalk, but in, not at the bank, it's not necessary at the bank, because they're leaving a relatively large strip of soil open, and that's great for a tree. In the rest of the village, we would need to add some pervious porous pavers for, to, to surround the tree into the sidewalk space. So I'm thinking that the sidewalk and the pervious paver would be right even. It just would, it would leave a little more room for water and for air to get down into the tree. So the cost of this delivered is 60, well, not delivered, $60, $61.60 for a cubic yard. And at the bank, we would need 52 yards. And there's special calculations that I got from Cornell. And that would cost $3,200. The tree itself, if we got a big, pretty established tree of a three-inch caliper, meaning the diameter of the tree would be three inches, about $200. Some of these figures are a little iffy, because I thought probably somebody from, from the highway department might be able to plant the tree, but I put in $50 for planting the tree. And so we end up with the final cost for the, for that would be $3,503. That's the structural soil and the tree planted, all the things that all of those need, except for, and if you look at the picture on the back, there should be a kind of drain that attaches to the storm drains in the village system. And I had no idea how to figure out what that would cost, but that's an additional cost to that $3,000. And then you have-
Is that per tree or is this for the five trees?
It's pretty much per tree, but you could, I mean, they, once you were doing it, I think it would not be as much money. You know, it wouldn't be just a multiple per tree. It would be, as you did more and more trees, it would be less as time went on for different trees. But yes, each tree needs a drain, and each tree needs to be connected to, to the storm drain, so that the water can, whatever water goes in can also go out if necessary.
Well, there are no storm drains in front of M&amp;T Bank. It's just a runoff. There's a runoff. There's no, no drains there.
Where does the runoff go to?
Runs down Route 9. Runs down into the, into the condensate hill.
Under the ground?
No.
On the surface?
Surface.
On the surface, okay. So I'd have to do more research. I mean, I had to do this in kind of a hurry, so there were questions I had that I didn't have time to check. But I, I actually would write to the professor that designed this system and ask her about it. And I would have to find out for sure.
And this would be outlining the perfect scenario?
Yes.
So in every situation, we probably wouldn't be able to include all of the factors-
Yeah, this is, you know, the absolute perfection of how you would do this according to them. But I think that certainly she recognizes that municipalities aren't able to do all of, all of these detailed things. But then if you added the, the cost of the sidewalk, which again was an estimation, the total cost for two trees, which is what I think we would eventually see in front of the bank, it would be $10,282. And then three trees, which is a possibility, is $13,700 for three trees.
I thought, I thought there were five trees that were coming down.
There are five trees coming out, but there is a lot of stuff going on in front of the bank. There's, they have their own trees behind the sidewalk. They also have two utility poles, and I think there's something else. So Meg thinks that you would not have as many trees as they do now. We also have these trees with a 36-foot canopy, so they would fill quite a large space. So two trees on the north and one tree on the south, or one on the north and one on the south, divided by the driveway. That's... Any questions that I can answer?
Well, now that I think of it, there are no storm drains in the downtown area on all the streets.
Okay.
They start like Garden Street, where there's one there, and going towards GG's. I think that's the first one over there.
Yeah, we've got a map downstairs in Pat's office, where all the storm drains are.
Right, okay.
So it'd be important to find out if we really do need-
Yes.
-a drainage system underneath these.
I think it's, it's a concern, just thinking about it quickly. When, when we have these tremendous storms, when it rains eight inches in a day, it might be a problem. Traditionally, I would say it wouldn't really be a problem, but if, if it's a sort of contained space, and you get eight inches down there, and then again, the next week you get five inches, where will that go?
Well, you, you don't want to have the roots sitting in water.
Right, exactly, yeah.
And we have, in many places, pretty good soil here, very sandy soil, so-
Right.
I don't know-
It probably would drain off.
Yeah, I don't know if drainage is such a big deal, except in some maybe special locations.
Yeah. The plan was to have this, the CU soil be three feet deep. And normally, trees, tree roots stay in the top 18 inches. They don't prefer to go way down. So I think, I think it would be okay, but I just would like to check.
But the locusts that we have here, the, the roots grow up, people start wanting to plant something on there, and then the roots come up higher.
Well, that's because, that's because they're looking for the water and the oxygen that they can't get in the space. I look, I, I just having a glance out of the car today, and in front of near Foster's, there is a tree, you know, a probably six-inch caliper tree, in a space that is basically seven inches wide. I mean, trees can't live like that. And they, and they're proving it, because they're, they're just going to give out pretty soon. So this just gives trees much more of what they need to be healthy and happy and grow and be pretty.
So what are we going to do in front of M&amp;T Bank?
So we would suggest that we have a five-by-10-inch foot tree pit, and use this soil. It would be pretty much in concert with the M&amp;T Bank, whether they would like to put pervious pavers in there to just sort of fill the space, or they could put what they have now, which is daylilies. That would be fine. People could plant ground cover. And, and it would look very similar to what, you know, what it looks like now. The difference is all underground. The difference is this product that would be under the ground. So it wouldn't really be different looking. Hopefully, the trees would look healthier. That's how it would be, you know, different.
Well, my question is, this has been before the planning board, and the planning board approved a certain plan already?
Yes, there, there are two issues. Well, I guess we'll talk about the, the specific case at M&amp;T first. And yes, the planning board has approved the project, so our intention is not to overrule the planning board and require that he use the structural soil, but maybe suggest or recommend or request that that be used. And also, you know, we probably, if we're going to adopt the recommendation of the tree commission, we would request a meeting with the property owner and go over the findings. I mean, they already have just the design by its, by its nature, has a favorable tree pit design that would meet the specifications. And the big question is, do we remove the trees and start fresh with the preferred species? Because these may get damaged. You know, it seems, you know, the, the sidewalk is buckled from the roots, so obviously those roots have to be removed to put the new sidewalk in. So we may end up, if we try to save them, you end up with dead trees, and now you've got to tear everything up again in a, in a couple of years. So that's, that's the first question. But in terms of the expense, I believe, we would have to talk about that. But it's, they've already planned to, to build the sidewalk. The trees would most likely be our responsibility.
I just want to say that the structural soil is, is intended to be built upon. You can actually put roads and structures on top of it. So it fits the, in the law, there's some kind of characterization of having, I don't remember the exact words, but some kind of structural, strong structure under the sidewalk. And this, I believe, would fit that characterization. And the top is just concrete. It's the very same kind of sidewalk that you would build anywhere. It's just that you put this underneath instead of regular gravel or regular structural stuff.
I seem to remember that John Clark wanted to just take out a few trees, right?
Right. We're certainly amenable to that. It's our position that once they're taken up, we, we'll see what they look like for sure. And taking them up, we think will damage them so much that in fact, we'll take them out.
Take all of them out.
But you can't tell. You, you don't know. And that's, I think, John's point. You don't know until you look. And that's true. So we would, they, they would dig up these trees. We would come over and see how much did you have, how many roots did you have to take out to get that sidewalk up? And, and then we would know.
The reason for the drains is because this material is very brand new. And so surface water will immediately drop through it and go right down. So in the case where the base is not sand or doesn't drain quickly, it could be clay, that hole could fill up with water and could, the roots could be sitting in water. So I think this is probably just a general-
Yes.
...detail. And I think depending on the soil, the native soil materials, it, it could change from, from place to place.
From tree to tree, yeah.
Another thing, too, is that this, this soil doesn't necessarily support a lot of other types of vegetation, because it's very rocky. It, it virtually is gravel with some sort of organic matter in it, and it supports trees. But my previous experience is there's a lot of other small annuals and perennials that won't live in it, because it does drain so quickly, and it is very rocky. So it might be good for trees, but maybe not for lots of other-
But it goes under the sidewalk and not in the tree pit, correct?
No, it goes in the tree pit, too.
Well, you, it, it depends. If it's a large tree pit, like the one that, that we are looking at for the M&amp;T, we would use regular soil right around the tree.
Because it's big enough.
And so you could plant things. In the core of the village, where the tree pits are so small, and there's really not room enough to make them very much bigger, then yeah, you would be, you would be using the structural soil right around the tree and underneath the tree as well. But in this particular case, it, it would be pretty much just the way it looks now, with regular soil. But that's a good point. It's, you can't grow, maybe you could grow cactuses.
Yeah, there's lots of things that do grow in it, but I just know that there's some things that don't.
Yeah, no, I'm sure it's true.
So the idea for the, for the bigger picture would be to have some kind of, you know, preset list of recommendations that when it came time to replace, you know, a tree or a section of sidewalk someplace else, we weren't starting over with the process. And we could say, well, we have a plan here, and this is ideally what we would like to see put in there. It could help the planning board and help us when we have to make a decision. So again, it's, it's two separate issues. So I'll make a motion to accept the, or that we adopt the position or the recommendations of the tree commission as it applies to the, to the future construction and planting.
Certainly.
Discussion.
Will we, will it, are we accepting it as it is here, or will we write more specifics to how it will apply in different?
I think we'll accept it as it is here, because that's all we have, but we can continue to, to define it further.
And then, does it, does it get, accepting it today, does it get added to our planning code or our general code?
Rich can answer that, but I don't think it would go into, yeah, I don't think it's a code adjustment. Now, it's just, this would be what we would recommend. This is like our general recommendation.
When, how do we enforce it? Is it just a general recommendation?
It seems it's quite expensive.
It's three times the cost of regular soil.
Well, yes, but I think it's even more than that, because what we are using now is just some mulch, right? How are we, when you plant trees?
Well, we use the soil that's already there.
It's already there, right.
These are typically in, in people's yards. These aren't planted in the middle of sidewalks like the ones we're talking about.
Oh, you mean on the main thoroughfare.
Yeah, we're talking about, maybe a tree has to be removed out here. What do you do? How do you replace it? You only have a couple of feet. What, what is the plan? Do you cut some of the sidewalk out and make a bigger trough? Well, you would go to, you know, the previous-
This is, sorry, this is just for the downtown area. It's not for like, when we do tree plantings in the fall or-
Correct. It's for planting in, in places where it's-
In the business area.
Where it's surrounded by concrete.
Concrete, okay.
Or other impermeable structures.
So I think that should be specified somewhere, so people don't come and say they want to have it everywhere. Because that can be quite expensive if we do, if we do that.
Yeah, well, there'd be no reason to put structural soil in your front yard.
Yeah.
And also, we, the responsibility for the sidewalks is on the property owner.
Correct.
Right. So in some ways, we're shifting a cost. I mean, as, as Cecily said, we're going to save money in the long run, because we're going to prevent these roots from coming up and buckling the sidewalks, prevent accidents and so on. But we are sort of shifting the expense.
To the village.
The village is going to adopt a little more expensive getting in the right tree and getting it in the right way, and avoiding problems with the sidewalk, saving the property owners some money.
No, but when, when we, when there's a problem with a tree root wrecking somebody's sidewalk, we are responsible.
We are, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Just for that part.
Okay.
Yeah. And the other thing I want to note is, you're not saying that we're going to use the same tree all throughout the village, right?
Um, well, no, not, no, not throughout the village, perhaps in the core. I-
Oh, okay, because in the past I-
We, we have an ongoing discussion, I believe, with the planning board, because there are members in the planning board, would like to use the same tree, pretty much as the, the locust is, is the street tree on the land right now. But I'd like to see at least a variety of zelkovas in front- to see at least a variety of locusts and perhaps a variety of, of other trees. But I don't think that's a decision just from the tree commission. We can make recommendations or shoot, you know, pure support trees, choose the one that you like, or, you know, sort of features, but-
Yeah, the village, or the, we approve the trees that are in, in the right of way anyway. And usually, we rely on the tree commission. So they would still be looking at it on a site by site basis. But it's more a, you know, guideline for preferred construction practices.
Pat would-
Can we amend it, amend the motion, Rich, to apply only to, uh?
I don't think you have to do anything, because the code basically says that the tree commission's gonna make recommendations for the removal, care, maintenance of various trees. I mean, it's basically what they're doing. They're giving this to you, and for any future action, you've got this in your, your records.
Well, but they're also specifying the kind of soil that they use. And I think that's what we're talking about.
Again, that's their recommendation.
Yes.
So what happens if, uh, they go through the planning process and they reject any recommendations? What do we have in place to be able to enforce that?
In the development process?
Well, if someone wants, doesn't wanna use a structural soil, and they wanna-
Well, it's gonna be with the planning board. And it's, uh, of course, these are in the, the village right of way, isn't it?
Yes.
This isn't on the applicant's property, as I understand it.
But the sidewalk is.
Correct. And that's gonna have to be in conjunction with the planning board going through the review.
Yeah.
So again, I mean, this is, what the tree commission is giving you is in accordance with the code. They're giving you recommendations
Right, okay.
On maintenance, the planning, and of various trees in the village.
David, isn't there very specific, um, information on the construction of sidewalks in the code?
Yeah, it, it says, um, it says in the code that it's recommended for sidewalks four inches of concrete and four inches of either marble chips or other approved substrate. And then, if, if cars are going to go over it, which in this case, they will be on the driveways, um, I think it's not a couple of inches of concrete and substrate, but approved substrate.
Okay.
Because it's going to go, um, it's gonna be narrower. The sidewalk is very large in front of the, um, the bank and the adjacent office building now. We didn't feel it needed to be that big. So the pit will go from three to five feet, line up with the post office and the Beekman Arms. And the sidewalks will go across the three driveways. There'll be one strip of concrete defining a sidewalk from the post office down to the barbecue restaurant. And I think the Beekman Arms has also been talking about possibly replacing their sidewalk. And again, the asphalt is, you know, undulates like a wave because of the tree roots. And I think they would be interested also in some way, they were gonna put down bluestone or something, of having a way that, that would not be pushing those plates up again. And possibly those honey locust trees being replaced. I know you'd like to phase them in, and John had said he wanted to phase them in. But if they're gonna be killed by the digging to put the new sidewalks in, then we just, you know, bite the bullet. And for a couple of years, we'll have some small trees. It'll eventually get larger. And but, but that's a different area than Market Street, which is, you know, the trees are encased in concrete. I mean, from Samuels to the cigar store, they're virtually mostly dead, the whole South Side Street. And there, there's no room at all. I don't know how you get them out of there. So you'd have to like figure a way to do it. I've seen Hudson has done it with a brick strip going along the curb. Fort Ewan just renovated their service a couple of years ago. They put in the brick strips with the trees, so they can get some, you know, water in there. So there could be compromises. Maybe it doesn't have to be three feet of structural soil. It could be a foot of structural soil to compromise on the cost, but give the tree and the sidewalk a better chance for a longer life. So, you know, it's just recommendations. And we'll have to, on a case by case basis, look at it when it comes before the planning board.
So maybe the, maybe the, the move here is to have it, to make this sub base material a, an approved sub base material, so that then there, everything refers back to what we're approving tonight.
Right.
Make this an approved material in, uh, tree situations, I guess.
And the mayor and I just talked that we would get the zoning enforcement officer. We could meet with Mr. Asavito and see what compromise we could come up with. Cause we did not talk about trees. We just talked about widening the tree pit, making the sidewalk a more standard sized sidewalk, and trees were not mentioned. And he said, we'll just leave the trees. But clearly, tree commission said it's gonna, you're gonna kill them. So it, the point is moved at this juncture.
So we can retract the, the motion on the general concept now. Can we do, make a recommendation based on the tree commission for the removal of the trees at the, like we normally do?
Yeah, I mean, again, in connection with the development, the tree commission is consulted by the planning board. And these are their recommendations. And that's gonna have to be taken into consideration when they go through the development process.
So typically-
I'm assuming some engineers also looked at this to make sure that this material is actually suitable.
But typically, the, the tree commission brings recommendations to the village board for removal of trees.
Great. And you, and you can accept the report from the tree commission.
But in the future, the tree commission should somehow get a whole planning board. I don't know. Do you know anybody on the planning board?
But this is a little bit, this is a little bit different in that we, we changing the sidewalks as well, and, and the trees. It is not just a tree, you know,
Oh, right.
Tree removal and, and putting a new one in. And so we have really a whole system that we, that we're trying to change. So it's somewhat different.
Well, I think it makes sense to take the trees out now and put new ones in. No sense.
When you, when you look at, when you look at these trees, I mean, they have welts all over the place on the bottom. Plus, they're not very nice looking anymore. They're broken up, so.
Spindly.
So is it fair to say without a motion, that the village board is in consensus with the tree commission in removing the trees and starting fresh with the preferred species?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Aye.
Fair enough. Moving along. Waste water.
Waste water, okay. First, um, treated 3.84 million gallons in June, processed 42,806 gallons of sludge, and processed, um, 400, 4,053 pounds of sludge in month of June. And, um, there are a couple of other items from wastewater. One is the, um, the Ford truck that Rugi's, uh, determined was no longer workable. So, um, I wanted to make a motion. Anthony Gasparini got an estimate for what he could get for it, for the truck for scrap. But, uh, he didn't think we'd be able to sell it. But I wanted to make a motion that we would empower Anthony to sell it as is, or sell for scrap.
To put it out to bedroom.
Yeah.
You're declaring a surplus and putting it out, right?
Right.
Second, discussion.
Yeah, we have made a decision that we can't fix it, so-
Correct.
So somebody can use it here.
Yeah, we, we've looked into that. Um, it's been looked at by Rugi's and also the mechanic at the street department.
Yeah. Not, someone else may decide it's cost effective.
Right. And also has, it does have a plow, an eight foot plow.
Right.
So, can we bid that separate, or?
Plow, I think is serviceable.
Yeah, yeah. Cause someone may not want the truck, and they may-
Yeah, sure.
Put them out the bits.
He got an estimate for the plow for scrap also, if we decide that
Okay.
we don't need.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also, um, there were, a couple of years ago, trustee Newnicker and, um, and Anthony Gasparini had identified a number of things that needed replacement. And now, um, we've got a proposal from Griffin Pump Service to, um, replace the Astor Home Lift Station pump. And, um, this is the sort of last item on the list that, uh, sort of to do that we've been going through. Anthony feels like if the pump were to fail, it would be very costly. You pay incredible daily, uh, emergency fees. Um, the panel that goes along with it is, uh, I think he said 32 years old. And, um, the estimate he got for the, um, the proposal from Griffin is for 18,500 to replace the, the pump.
Have you gone through the procurement policy?
And put that out to bid as well.
Right. We have to get more estimates. And you have to get at least three, I believe.
Okay. I'm looking in his memo to see if, um-
If I recall, I think there was at the time that they, they priced that, I think there was multiple bids. I think since they're old, they have to go back on. I think that's how they came up with that number.
So we can have them get that for us for next month.
Okay.
Is that all you got for wastewater?
Yep.
Ayes, water?
We treated 12,719,000 gallons of water this, uh, this month, in the month of June. Uh, we also fixed a leak to the basement. And I sent you what this looked like here. Which one got a copy of it? And the guys did it all by themselves. We had to dig about 75, 75 foot long trench, about three feet deep. Uh, had water coming into the, uh, the side of the building. Every time we had heavy rain, and you know, just painted it downstairs. So we, we fixed it and did a beautiful job. And I wanna really recommend the water poison on this one here. Uh, that's a pot sun. All four of them, yes.
So I just want, they put a pipe underneath this crushed stone?
Well, what, what was there was a pipe, a crushed pipe. And what they did now, if you look through the, through the pictures, is they-
Oh, yeah, I see it there.
Uh, they, they put a, an angle, uh, an angle, uh, water repellent in there, on, on the corners. And, uh, first, they, they, they put tar in there. They tarred it, and then they put an angle water repellent in there to seal this thing off. And then they put in plastic, and then they put a pipe in, and then on top of the pipe, uh, they put gravel, and then filled it back up again. And, uh, the thing, it works like a charm. I, I even, I even got a shirt out of it.
Good job.
Is that the one you're wearing tonight?
Yeah, the one I'm wearing.
Very nice.
Yeah. Um, we received bids to improve the pump control station. And, uh, the three, we got three bids. And the lowest bid was 62,000, 62,850 dollars. They ranged from, from that 62,850 to 84,000 dollars. And I wanna make a motion, uh, to accept that bid and go out and, uh, for constructions, send a letter out that we, we want to build this. Uh, the village engineer, uh, supports that. And, uh, so I'd like to get a second to see if we could go out for-
Discussion. Alls in favor?
Aye.
As far as the water distribution system is concerned, we repaired an eight inch water main break in Reincliff, Valley Way Road. We replaced the, the third, uh, broken hydrant at Four Morton Road in Reincliff. We also replaced this, in the same vicinity, a, uh, four inch water valve that fed, that feeds Howland Avenue from Morton Road. So we did a lot of work in, in Reincliff in the last couple of weeks. We're going to do another one this coming week, or this month, on Grinnell Avenue, where there was also a broken hydrant. All of the broken hydrants there were of the vintage 1895 variety. And that doesn't mean they were made in there, but it's a patent. But the company went out of business in 1940. And so since then, there's no more. And I've been trying to sell these as, as antiques. Uh, we, we placed a broken service line on, uh, in Montgomery Street, and that was on the July 4th weekend. We had water coming out there, so I had to get, uh, people to, to, to mobilize there. And, uh, we found right next to the, uh, the circuit was a service line that broke, because service line was right next to the fire hydrants. We first thought it was the hydrant. But it was also one of these old hydrants that needed to be replaced. So we, we replaced both the service line, which the customer pays for, and the hydrant with which we, that we are paying for. And we use, uh, the help from the street department, Howie.
Sure.
Uh, I had, uh, I've, I've been doing mapping of, of the water system. I, I finished the, uh, the village, and we are now concentrating on the water system in Reincliff. And what we're doing is we, first of all, you know, easy thing is to seize the hydrants, but we, we can find many times are the, the shut off valves. And that, we are doing that right now. Well, we want, we found one of the shut off valves that feeds the, uh, the main 16 inch trunk line that comes from the water plant and pushes water up to a highly road, uh, on a piece of property on Wall Street, which is one of the side streets, the first side streets as you go into Reincliff, on Reincliff Road. It's right next to the Star Library, that, that property. And it turned out that the person had put a tree built years ago, a tree right on top of the valve. And, uh, two more on top of the, uh, the trunk line. So I went to see the gentleman, and they were very nice about it. And, uh, within a few days, they moved all the trees and we, we placed them there. Uh, we had a problem on Violet Hill Road, on Violet Hill Reservoir. We had to replace a, a pump, one of the number two pumps. Uh, what we, the reason we need the pumps up on Violet Hill Road is because the reservoir is obviously high. So our, the number of houses may be six or seven in, in the same neighborhood. And, uh, there's no pressure exerted there. So we have to actually pump, you know, uh, have a pump there to, to, to create pressure on there. Uh, that is as far as the, the water, uh, water department is concerned. I do have, I periodically, uh, report on power reduction initiatives that we have. And I think I gave you all a, a copy of, of this here, and see how we did in, in June. We, uh, generated 3,338 kilowatt hours. We used 4792 kilowatt hours at a net saving of about 534 dollars based on 16, uh, 16 cents per kilowatt hour. Uh, one other thing that is, has come up, and I got it through Anthony Gasparini, actually. There is a company called ECS, and that's called Energy Containment, uh, Containment Specialists. And what they do is they, uh, work with the big power companies and see how they can cut down some of the power usage in term, when we have a brownout or something like that. And they go to big users and see what kind of generating capacity they have. And it turns out that, uh, they did the village, you know, the, what we have here in, in the building, and also in the, in the wastewater department and so on, and in the water department. And it turns out that the only one that qualifies because of the size is the one in the water department. And what they had told us, uh, they, uh, so, so a, a month ago, or two months ago, I came to the board and asked them for permission, so they could go out to the, to the, to the central Hudson and, and do an investigation, see how much, what our peak, uh, power consumptions are. And they came back. And the net of it is that we can, we get a, about a 2,600 dollar, a payment every year, uh, split between summer and, and winter payments, uh, to, uh, to, to go on, uh, to use our, our generators, you know, to provide power for ourselves, if indeed there is a brownout condition and so on. So that's just like found money. So 2,600 dollars and, um, 30, what was it? 2,650 a year. On top of it, they're paying us 40 cents an hour of, of usage for, uh, the, the fuel that we are using. And it turns out, uh, we would use about 30 cents of fuel when they're paying us 40. So there's a small savings there. But anyway, so what I need to do is I need somebody to sign it. I probably could sign it, but I think I want the mayor to sign this here. And then Pat will forward this to the company.
What is this?
A few guys. So I don't think we need, do we need a, a motion to do that?
I've never seen it. I don't mean-
You haven't seen it?
Let's let Rich review it and move.
Okay. Well, if, if you review, just give it back to Pat, okay?
Is that all you got, Ayes?
Um, uh, yes, for now.
Okay, so on-
Okay. So on to the fire department. We'll start with Scott.
Okay. The monthly call volume for the month of June was 16 EMS calls to the town and 32 to the village, for a total of 48. Eight fire calls to the town and eight to the village, for a total of 16. And one of those includes that big fire we had out at Eveready.
There's 200,000 gallons of water in the water department.
Thank you.
Yeah. And motor vehicle accidents, there was five calls to the town and two to the village for a total of seven. So the fire department responded to a total of 29 calls to the town, 42 to the village, for a total of 71 calls for the month of June. I also have three applications for new members for the fire department. They've been recommended by Vice President Ken Scattergood. They are Ryan Hall, Andrew Fraley, and Jeffrey Cotter. I'd like to make a motion that we accept these applications as recommended by Ken Scattergood.
Second.
They're all probationary firefighters? That's what they're...
They would... Yes, they would.
All right.
All three as probationary firefighters.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome, Jeffrey.
So from there, on the fire department, I have an update on the contract negotiation. If you've been following it all, it's been going on for quite some time. I think it started last October. And last month, on the 27th, I met with the supervisor, Elizabeth Spinsia, who is here with us tonight, and Henry Campbell, the emergency management coordinator for both the village and the town. And I put forth kind of a different plan than we were working on, which would call for a five-year plan. I think it's been outlined at a town board meeting already. That would start at $160,000 and increase $10,000 a year to $200,000. And the benefits that I saw were, you know, it'd allow a gradual increase for the town so the less in their impact. It would secure the funding for continued operations in the village. It would protect the role of our volunteer firefighters, and ultimately would provide for uninterrupted and guaranteed service to the residents of the town protective district as well as the village. And so the terms, like I said, are for five years, which start January 1st of 2014, would go through December 31st of 2018. The terms would be identical to what they've been in the past with the exception of a 90-day cancellation clause notice. And you guys should have or should have seen a copy of it, but it's basically the same as the past. So I'd like to make a motion to enter into this agreement with the town.
Second. Discussion.
Is it incrementally $8,000 a year for five years? Is that the way?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand. Yeah. So it starts at 160, ends at 200 in 2018.
Were there any other conditions settled, or is...
Well, we're trying to do the math here. It goes to two... That would be 210,000 after five years.
No, it starts at 160, 170, 180, 190, 200.
Starts in '15?
No, it starts...
Starts now.
January 1st of 2014.
Oh, okay.
So the time has already passed.
I see.
So, no, there are no other conditions that would be in the contract. But once we approve the contract, then we would talk about another plan, the rest of the concept moving forward. So right now on the table is the contract. Any more discussion on that?
Well, we're also going to have somebody from the town be liaison. Is that contingent?
Yeah, we've offered... No, it's not contingent, but we've offered to the town for them to assign a liaison to the fire department that would be, you know, would have access to all the same information that we do.
Seems like we want to do that.
Yeah, we should definitely.
I mean, we have to... At the very least, that should be part of the contract. Otherwise, the trust factor can't be maintained.
We want the town to be fully informed of what's going on. So would there be a requirement for somebody to attend our budget meetings?
You're setting the budget... You're setting the dollar rate right now for the five years going forward.
Right.
But I think they want visibility of what they're spending on. I thought that's what...
The contract simply calls them to make an annual payment based upon these numbers.
And we've invited them to come to the table.
Well, they're agreeing to the amount, so it would be in their best interest.
And either party has the ability, within 90 days of the end of the year, to opt out.
So we're just talking about executing the contract, and then we will have a bigger discussion on, you know, plans moving forward from there. So all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. So obviously, we have to wait for the town to... I know they've preliminarily approved it, but they would still have to sign the contract. But I will sign it tonight, and I have a copy here for Elizabeth. But in the further concept moving forward, and I don't want to speak for Elizabeth, but I know for the town, but I know the town wants to... They want to get out of the fire business, which would create districts in the plan. Now, we have the village fire department, Hillside Fire Department, and Rhine Cliff Fire Department. And each of those departments, us being the village and them actually being districts, each has a portion of the town protective district assigned to it. So in the plan or discussion moving forward, Hillside would take on their portion of the protective district. Rhine Cliff would take on their portion of the protective district. And then there would potentially be a new district that would include the village and the town protective part. And if that were to happen, then this would be a... It would be a district with its own elected board of commissioners to run. And the idea is to put the negotiations behind us, move forward, and then would allow time to address all the other options, which would include, you know, there's been talk of the ambulance district, there's been talk of a big townwide district. But this would just say, you know, we have secured services for everyone involved, and it would allow us to focus not on negotiations anymore, but on the path forward.
Do you want to say something?
Yes. Good evening. Thanks, Heath. That's well said. I feel like a broken record, but most important for us is to ensure that each of the three departments in the town are viable and healthy, both financially, and that the members are supported. Because we realize that we need these three departments, and they need each other to survive. The mutual aid is paramount. We wanted to accept this compromise offer, but of paramount importance to us is this new district. We don't want to be in a position of having our town residents not represented by people who they... We want them to be represented by people they elect. So the only representation they have with regard to this contract is us, and we only have very limited power. We have negotiating power with you. So we'd like to see this turned over to a board of elected commissioners. And that will let it be self-governing. It will let everybody in the district have their representation, and it will also create one rate. And we will... We've asked Rhine Cliff and Hillside, as Heath said, to take on their portions. So we're hoping that this might also open the door in the future, when the departments are ready, to look towards one department for the whole town, which, in our opinion, is, while it's not in our control, we know it's a great option for all the residents of Rhinebeck. One fire department with one rate, you know, with three houses. So that's what we're looking for. And we would start the move to consolidate. We would hope that you would too, consolidate this department immediately so that we're out of this conundrum by early next year. So I guess I'm looking for, you know, some... Heath and I have talked, Heinz and I have talked. I really haven't talked to the board as a whole, but I guess we're looking for some kind of, you know, agreement that this is, you know, that you're in favor of this as well. But thank you.
But you heard the motion that was made and how it was structured. Do you think that can be agreeable to your board?
We've agreed in it at our last meeting, so we're waiting for it. But, you know, with the understanding that we start immediately on consolidating the district, or creating a new district of the village and their portion of the town's fire protection district. So I guess I'm looking to poll you guys to find out that you support that. Thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth. I just sent my agenda along.
Howie, street department? Okay.
Well, I didn't know if we wanted to...
Yeah, I didn't know if we were finished with this.
Yeah. Just to...
Yeah, I kind of asked a question if you could...
Well, this is a new... In other words, the idea of consolidation. I hadn't heard any details put on that until this evening. So for myself, all I can say is that I think it's a really good idea. I don't know if your timeline is feasible, like to get it...
I can give the board an outline for its next meeting so at least you understand the concept.
Right. So, yeah. I mean philosophically, you know...
And we don't have all the details put together, and that's kind of why we wanted to, you know, stop...
Yeah.
Yeah. Move beyond the previous details of this call and that call and, you know, get the contract established so we could move forward and talk about the bigger picture. So... And Rich has agreed to outline it for us, and so we'll have something to work on. So we don't know exactly whose responsibility and how we, at the moment, how it would go about, what has to be created, what has to be dissolved. But that would all come out in the near future. And we would involve the public, which would take some time, you know, to seek input from our residents as well as those in the protective districts.
Thank you. We're glad this is behind us, and we'll move forward together. So thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Howie?
Okay. Highway department. Drainage work was done on Rockefeller Avenue, not Rockefeller Lane. This is an area that constantly floods out during rainstorms. And we don't even have to have a lot of rain, but it's always flooding down there. And the reason why we did this, actually, the highway department did the drainage work themselves. We might be paving Rockefeller, depending on the bid that we get. We are going to move forward with Asher. Asher goes over to Rockefeller, and we might continue all the way up, depending on what the bids are. So we wanted to be prepared with the drainage work before we did that.
Do we have that prepared, Howie, to bid?
I thought that it was going out to bid, yeah. Pat?
Do we publish that bid?
I had it all set... No, we haven't published it yet.
Oh.
No, because it had to be approved.
You want to do that?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we put out to bid. There's two separate bids, right, Pat?
Yeah. It was for Rockefeller and...
Well, Asher Road.
Yeah, Asher Road and Rockefeller.
Yeah. Asher Road going from Route 9 over to Rockefeller Lane as one bid. And then continuing, a second bid to go from Asher Road, Rockefeller, up to Crowell.
Crowell.
Is it going to go to Route 9, the other way?
I don't believe so.
No.
I think that's okay. That portion of Rockefeller from Asher down to Route 9 is okay.
So I make a motion to put those out to bid.
Second.
Discussion.
Howie, where is the money coming?
The money, we have some money in CHIPS.
CHIPS money?
Yes. Well, that's why we don't know if we can do the whole job. We have to see how much. We definitely want to do Asher Road.
That's why you split up the bid.
Yeah, yes. We definitely want to do Asher Road. We believe we have enough money for Asher Road. And since if a crew's going to be there, they might give us a good price on doing the whole thing.
Now, when you say you have the money from CHIPS, does this include this year's money? Or is it from past money?
Yeah.
We get, what, about $40,000?
Right.
A year or something like that, right?
Right. Pat, do you have the figure of...
No, but I have the bid package.
I understand we have about $60,000 in the CHIPS fund right now, so...
That should do it.
I think we... Yeah.
That should do it.
So it may be close. The estimate is it would be close. Projection, not the estimate. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
CHIPS money, by the way, is highway money given to us by the state every year. And we have to use it, or else we're going to lose it. On Astor Drive and Somers and Mill Street, potholes have been repaired. The guys are milling around the basins and some intersections to help drain the water. Blacktop will follow. We purchased a used dump truck last month, and Mike reports that it's worked out well for pulling trailers and making small mulch deliveries. We can also use it for the tree commission when we do our plantings. We can put the mulch in back of there. But I'd like to also thank Lou Rugi. He always gave us his truck to use. We'll probably still use his also. We need to rent a vacuum truck to clean the basin lines for the drainage. As Mike tried to clean out a line on Manor Road with a power snake that he rented, but it didn't work. And we rented this truck a few years ago, so we want to get it back and clean some of the lines that we need to clean. And I asked Mike to make a list of the areas where he knows that have to be cleaned. The brush piles, Mike's asking that the brush piles do not be placed near the catch basins as when it rains, the brush gets thrown into the drainage systems, and that's why we have to clean the systems all the time. So please, keep the brush piles away from the storm drains. They're working on tree trimming.
Can you...
Yeah, yeah.
I do a lot of walking to the village, and I sympathize with what you're saying. And I don't understand why so many people put their leaves and their brush and so on right sometimes on top of the drains. And I'm just wondering if we should send, with our water bills, just a reminder on there, how detrimental that can be.
Yeah, we can do that.
Plugging up our drainage system, you know, and causing flooding in the streets. It's been going on for years. And I know you have battled that.
Right.
Mike has battled that for a long time.
If we're going to do a letter like that, we should mention again that grass clippings are not supposed to...
Yeah, right. That's another thing.
A lot of people are doing that.
And the other thing, too, is I think that we probably should get it to more of a schedule for pickup. I think, you know, being able to place your brush on the street anytime, you know, you can see that the village goes through, highway department goes through...
Five minutes later, it's back out again.
Picks up a whole street's worth, and then all of a sudden, one day later, it's a new pile sits there, and it's there for another week.
We've been battling this ever since I've been on the board.
Were you setting me up for the grapple truck reference?
I'm not setting up for the grapple truck.
Because that usually comes right about now.
The only thing... But I think there's lots of other municipalities that don't just have pickup for...
They don't pick up brush. We're the only village around that I know that picks up brush. They do it in the spring and in the fall. That's it. We do it all year round, which is a bone of contention with me, but it's a good service we have, but the village always has...
It takes them away from other...
Yeah, but it always has piles of brush in the streets. Doesn't look good.
While we're on that, and I know it's not in Mike's report, but he did tell me yesterday that they spent five days, the entire crew, five days to remove the storm debris. And that would have been greatly reduced with the grapple.
He's just pushing for a grapple truck. It has a grapple on it. One person can operate it and puts it right in the back. There's a dump in the back of it, dumps it right back there. One-man operation. We're working on that, Heath. They're working on tree trimming around the sidewalks and then the sides of the road intersections. As Heath just said, on July 3rd, a big storm rolled through in the late afternoon, and heavy rain came down and closed some of the roads. We were... Heinz and I and Heath were here in the fire department that night with all the action going on. There was a lot...
The next day you left.
The next day I left on a pre-planned vacation, yes. But I'd like to thank the fire department for that night. They were out there all night long and working hard. Mill Street took the worst of that storm. There was three or four trees that were blown down and... There was three or four trees that were blown down, and wires were down and everything. So Mike says that they had ten loads of brush was removed just from Mill Street alone.
Yeah.
After that, the catch basins were cleaned, and the ditches were cleared, and that's about it for Mike's report, except he's saying something about some new digital radios that he had. He doesn't think that they're working too well, so we can look into that.
We've been working with NICOMCO continually.
Howie? I'm sorry. I have a bid here for a plow for this truck that we, this used truck that we purchased, but I wanted to ask Mike a few questions because I noticed one has a warranty on, two-year warranty, the other ones don't say anything about warranties. I don't know if you guys noticed this.
Didn't notice.
One has a rubber deflector, another one doesn't, so I wanted to make sure we're going apples with apples, and there's no really rush. We can discuss this at our next meeting. Mike was off today, so I couldn't talk to him about it.
Okay.
And you guys gonna go after this tree in the Landsman Kill, right?
Yeah, I spoke to Rich about that. There's a tree that fell in a Landsman's Kill, and I was just wondering about the legality of who's responsible, and apparently the homeowner's responsible, because the tree was on their property and it fell into the middle of the stream. It's down here behind...
Blocking the whole stream.
Yeah, and now's a good time to get it out because we have the, working on a dam, which we'll talk about later, and the stream is low because we had to drain the lake partially. So it's a good time to remove that tree, so we'll talk to the homeowner, the landowner.
Thank you.
Thanks, Howie.
Thank you. Anything else?
Well, I just wanted to...
Welcome back.
Oh, thank you.
To piggyback on your comments in regards to the storm, it was a pretty intense storm that came through. I just wanted to thank the response, like you did, of the Fire Department, our Police Department, certainly our Highway Department who was here on the 3rd, and then again on the 4th of July to clean up the debris that was cleared out by Central Hudson. And that also to thank Central Hudson, because they did a great job of getting everyone back up and running pretty quickly. Onto planning, yes, Scott.
Well, I'm just going to comment that I don't have a planning and zoning report for the month of June.
Okay. Do you?
Unless Gary has it.
Well, with zoning, we wanted to nominate two new members to be alternate.
Do you wanna back up just a second?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we did have, since we were here in this room last, we did have a couple of smaller meetings, which usually don't get a big turnout, so I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed that we did accept the resignation of Francois Weigle, who was our, the chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and thank him greatly for his forty years that he served on the board, thirty-seven of which he was the chair. So we will be hearing more about that later, but in the interim, we have appointed Al Decray as the interim chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals while we get everything else hammered out there. So they're up and, up and running still, but did not want to miss the opportunity to thank Francois for his many, many years of service.
All right. With that, we had two openings. One alternate, I guess, had left, another alternate became a permanent member of the zoning board, so I wanted to nominate Brandt Nunecker and Judy Merritt to be alternates to the zoning board.
I'll second that. Any discussion on that?
I just wanted to say that we're fortunate, you know, to have, obviously, Brandt Nunecker served on this board, and zoning issues have been very important to him. He's been working with us ever, even since he left the board, and Judy has been on the tree commission, and she's sworn she's gonna stay on the tree commission, but is also willing to serve as an alternate of the board, so we, two very qualified people. We have a couple of people on the zoning board who do travel a little bit, so the alternates will be playing an active role there.
I think that Brandt Nunecker will make an excellent choice for that.
I think Judy would make an excellent choice, as long as she stays on the tree commission.
I don't know.
Okay, thanks, Gary. So the police and court...
We gotta vote.
Oh, we can't move along?
We gotta vote.
All that discussion, let me distract it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome, Judy. Police are, we're working on a contract with the police. Our next meeting is August 5th, 6:00 PM. For June, they issued sixty-nine tickets. There were one hundred and seven calls or incidents they responded to, and there were six arrests. That's all, all we have for that. Moving along to special requests, we do have a completed event application for Centeclos, but it has not passed through all the channels of, you know, Fire Department, Police Department yet, so it'll probably be coming our way.
When do they need a...
What's that?
I can't think about Christmas yet.
Oh.
Christmas in July.
The dates, is that what you...
Yeah, what, when do they need an affirmative response?
Well, we just got it, right, Pat?
Yeah.
I just heard of it today. So there's no action there, but the next one is the Rhinebeck Garden Club had requested to place a plaque in the Doughboy Park over here, just showing that they take care of that area. Are you gonna say something about that, Brenda?
Do I need to? Well, I'm just here to answer my questions. I think you might be the letters and a mock-up of the sign.
Yeah.
Everyone, who?
I haven't seen a mock-up.
How big is it, Brenda?
It's...
Is it this size?
Bigger than a red box?
Yes, it's, it's...
Oh, beautiful.
What's the mark?
Four by six inches.
Oh, that's...
The height can be whatever is appropriate, depending on the location. It could be twelve or fourteen inches long.
So it's much...
It's one of the ground, and it's silver, it's aluminum, the whole, most of it's black.
So it just goes flush with the, with the ground?
Yeah.
Nice.
It goes on a post in the ground or it sits on the ground?
It could be back in the ground, maybe elevated like it's supposed to be.
On a little paver or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you saw the right, what they want to say.
Yep. What color is it? Because everything, I think, in Doughboy is brass, right? Brass or bronze kinda has that kinda color?
Greenish.
Patina?
Patina.
Should be...
It's blackening on the brass, sort of the names and everything. They are, they would be...
Brass or bronze, right? With a patina. And what color is yours?
It's more money.
We just, I just think...
It's four, again, this is what we have the price for. Engraved black with silver color edge, and the engraving is also silver color. Aluminum guaranteed, not the rust. It runs well with golds.
It's the Doughboy.
Well, that gold, what color? Red.
We're very, very particular when it comes to that little part.
So what did you...
So how much more would it be for...
Do you suggest that we buy this out?
Yeah. Okay.
So...
Unless, of course, the rest of the board thinks that I'm crazy.
No, it should blend in with the rest of the plaques.
That's a separate question, really.
Okay. Talk about that later.
Would you agree with that? I mean, that, yeah, that would look nice.
I don't know what the cost would be now. I look at that price, and you'll be, need now to come back another month or two to get, if they find out it's too much money and we decide not to go with the brass.
Back around the 12th.
We're meeting in a couple more weeks.
Are we being...
This is a late meeting for this month, yeah.
Oh, that's true. Okay, so it'll always be the second to the state.
So you wanna check and see, what is the request?
Well, here's what I would say, is that if you can get that thing, that sign in brass, I would, my opinion is that you would be good to go ahead. And if you find that not...
Your comp, you'll make up the difference.
I'll make up the difference.
I think she said it's smaller than that. You said four, four by six.
Yeah, it's four by six.
This is eight and a half by eleven.
It's, it will be four by inches by six inches.
Yeah, so...
It's all smaller than that.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with that.
And, but then, and the height can be whatever is appropriate.
Okay. Okay, so there's probably not that much of a big price difference anyway.
Yeah. So, that is exactly what you're going to...
That was just my opinion. I don't know if the rest of the board agrees.
Do you wanna make a motion that if it's, we can approve it with brass, then they wouldn't have to come back if it's gonna, if they can make that work? Does that sound...
If it's not brass, we can come back.
Does that work? Is that good for you?
Exactly. That sounds like a viable option to me.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept your submission in brass.
Second.
Any more discussion?
If you come back, if you decide that it's not cost-effective, that you'll come back before this board with an alternative with your...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Brenda.
Wait, let me thank Brenda and the Garden Club for maintaining the Doughboy Park over there. You're doing a wonderful job.
It's great.
Thank you. Not only will this give us the credit, but it will also be more of our membership, which we go by ten, right?
Yeah.
So people are aware that there is a garden home in my direction, and we need to save the forests.
All right. The next one, we have a request to drill wells.
Yeah.
On a subdivision on Winkup Lane.
I looked, I looked at that. At first, I didn't know what the parameters were, but once I got the drawings and the location of the parcels, I think it is reasonable for him to drill wells. Assume, and I think they were already approved by the Department Board of Health, the County Board of Health. I think it's about sixteen hundred feet, and he would have to lay a water line from number fifteen, Winkup Lane, all the way to his place, which is a long distance, quite expensive to do that. I have no, no issues.
So that property's in the village?
It's in the village, yeah.
Because that's the dividing line, right?
Yeah, it's right, well, it's actually, as you go, Winkup Lane, it's on the left-hand side, close to the fairgrounds.
Yeah.
It's not, the right side is the town.
Town, right.
The left side is the village.
There's no water or sewer service out there?
Sixteen hundred feet from the next water.
There's no sewer, sewer service?
No.
It's the only requirement.
Okay. So they needed a, apparently, according to the developer, they, the Department of Health needed a statement from the village okaying it, so I'll make the motion to okay the wells for that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Other business? Asher Dam. Let's see here, we started our repairs on that last week, which was to include some small repairs on the face of the dam, some replacement of the riprap, and when some of the riprap was removed, we realized that the problem was significantly larger. It went from about forty square feet of stone that needed to be repaired to five hundred and forty square feet of stone that needed to be repaired. So that's why you'll notice that the lake is much lower than it typically has been lower to allow them to work in there. They've started the excavation and the repair. It's kinda going, going along well. We've had some good news recently. We've had the DEC involved, New York State Emergency Services as well as FEMA, and we're continuing to work with them in terms of funding and approval, but where we're at today is we have the initial portion repaired, re-grounded on the face of the dam. I should add that there was some concern that that stone was, was basically all there was, holding the dam up, but there is a great deal of concrete behind that upstream on the lakeside, but it's still been recommended by, you know, the village engineer as well as the project, the engineer working on this project to get repaired as soon as possible. So we have a change order, you know, we're able to negotiate a better price than we had originally talked about. I spoke with the contractor today, and the amount is forty-five thousand dollars to continue to finish the rest of it.
And that's on top of the original forty thousand dollars?
Right. The whole bid, the whole project was fifty-nine thousand and change for the dam and the pedestrian bridge, which was about forty, twenty, forty thousand for the dam, so this would be an additional forty-five thousand dollars to, to repair the face, and the situation now is that they're there, the dam is lowered, it's an opportune time to, to make the, make the repair.
So Heath, the initial proposal we saw for the change order was seventy-four thousand dollars.
Correct.
Was that, is that the number we were able to negotiate from, or was that number inclusive of...
No, that's the number where we, we had come down to, to forty-five thousand from, from the seventy-four. I did confirm with the village engineer that even the, it's well within the acceptable price range for that, for that work.
So we don't have to rebid anything? Everyone's all, this is okay to do?
No, this, as long as it doesn't change the essentials of the contract, I mean, what you did is you unearthed some work and you found out there's a lot more than was originally bid.
More of the same.
Right, you don't need to rebid this.
Which was not visible to anyone, including the engineers. It was obscured by, A, the water coming over, and, and B, all the stone, the riprap that was laying against the face of it, so...
I wasn't, I didn't see the original details for the repair, but there are some elements of this additional repair which seem to be slightly different than maybe what was in the original repair, because from what I understood, the left side and the right side of the dam were gonna be repointed. The new area that's been exposed has some voids.
Correct.
And so what now will they replace those voids with?
With the local stones.
With the stone on, on site, it'll be, stone will be packed in and it will be...
Using onsite materials?
Yes. Yes.
And so were those, were those details shown as a part of the original bid package, or was there always stone replacement as a part of even the first?
I don't think it was on there.
It was outlined in the original one that said that they would use, what was there in it, and they would use additional stone. I don't know how it was worded, if necessary, in the same, the same language, well, similar language, it says repair downslope stone masonry of dam, parapet face with new or reset grounded stone masonry, but it appears to my novice eye that there is enough stone, all the stone that was washed out or fell out is laying in the, in the spillway.
So what I'm getting at is this, is that if, when you're repointing stone, you're tucking new mortar in between all the existing joints, and the stone's already anchored. It may have masonry ties or something tying it back into the existing dam. So if we're gonna, we have some pretty good-sized voids now in the face of that dam. Is there an anchoring detail that anchors the new stones that we're gonna be placing in those voids to the dam that's behind or the structure that's behind? That's what I'm getting at. Is he just gonna put stone in there and just tuck point it, or is it now actually gonna be mechanically anchored?
You're talking with some kind of rebar or something?
Rebar, masonry ties, I'm just, I'm just wondering if we should ask for those details, if, we should ask our engineer if any other details are required for those repairs that we're actually approving.
See, in some places here, where it needs, where it needs to be repointed, is right on top of some huge boulders, so you would just set them on there, you know?
I, I think I understand what's the question. We have had, since yesterday morning, we have had an engineer onsite observing all We have had, since yesterday morning, we have had an engineer onsite observing all the work that's been happening.
That was a recommendation from D E C on. Was it the design engineer?
No, it was the village engineer or representative from, and now the design engineer is back. He was away, and he's back, and they have, you know, coordinated together, the two engineers and the contractor. And we, like I said, continuing to work with the D E C. We've also had an engineer from the State Emergency Services that's been out there. And basically, they're all in agreement and support of the work that's being done and to continue with it.
But I think I know what Scott's saying. He's saying, is this going to be secured to the more sturdier structure that's in back of this? The bricks on the, on the face of this dam is just superficial. It's just, it's for looks, basically.
Just the wear. It really just, it prevents erosion of the concrete. So water comes over the dam, those stones break the flow of the water from hitting the concrete and wearing down the concrete.
Well, I get water in there and freeze, and then break.
Right. What I'm just saying is, a lot of times, when you build masonry walls, and it has two widths, one being the concrete, and the other one being brick or stone, it's anchored, they're anchored together. And so what I just was wondering is, if that detail exists? I want to make sure that the price that we are giving is for the work that needs to be done, not just an assumption that what was specified for the left and the right side, which was just tuck pointing.
Now, we're talking about a space that is three feet deep that needs to be filled.
Yeah.
You know, after three feet, approximately three feet, there's the concrete wall for another three feet. So you would have to get into the concrete wall all the way down to anchor any kind of things, and that's not going to happen, because you have to rip everything out. So what I think they're going to do is they, they build a stone wall, you know, support it, shim it up, put cement in there, build another layer, and then put cement in there, but going in three, almost three feet of it, particularly in some areas where the hole is huge. But I don't think there's any way to put in any kind of steel reinforcement that anchors against the dam, if that's the question that you have.
Typically, it's just a strap.
Yeah, strap, yeah. But you cannot get at the wall, that's the point. You know, it's so far, it's so deep.
Yeah, the wall is not.
It's not exposed. It's not available, you know, to.
It doesn't appear that any of that kind of.
Was ever done.
No, it doesn't appear that it was in there before, so.
That's why the stones fell out. Right? So, I mean, it's not a safety issue, it's an issue of how long is it's going to last? You know, it's going to last, obviously, thirty, forty years.
Well, the dam was built in nineteen sixty.
The concrete portion.
The concrete portion of it was built. The other one's one-hundred-and-fifty years old or whatever.
I mean, the engineers have all.
Right.
Signed off on the plan, so.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to accept the change order at forty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
More discussion?
Good, Gary.
I know nothing. No, I think we discussed it.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we don't have, FEMA has not given us any money yet, right? Do we have FEMA money already, or?
FEMA awarded us, and I believe Irene, two thousand and eleven, is that?
Right.
They had awarded us somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty thousand. I don't have the numbers in front of me. We spent about eighty of that on the divers and the installation of the valves. So that would, in theory, leave seventy.
And we have the money in hand.
That seventy has already been spent and reimbursed. We do not have, or the eighty.
Eighty, yeah.
We do not have the seventy in account. They, the way that that grant worked is that you pay for it, and then they reimburse you. So the worksheet stayed open, and we were, there had been some confusion, because the FEMA funds are administered through the New York State Emergency Services, and FEMA said something to the effect of, well, give us our money back, you didn't do all the work. But New York State had said, given us the extension until two thousand and fifteen to complete it. So we have an appeal open for that. This would, of course, push us over even the original number by some.
And we have, we have asked.
Yes, we have, have the engineer from New York State Emergency Services, he has been out here, he has written a letter on our behalf to, I guess, to his own department. Today, requested that FEMA send a representative out and inspect it, because, as I understand, that's another step to access emergency funding related to what we discovered. You know, we uncovered a bigger problem than we thought, and we don't really have an option other than to fix it. Good on that? Employee health insurance plan, we need to.
Yeah.
I know we forget a lot, but I think we got that one. Employee health insurance, there's no major updates. We're still trying to tweak out an acceptable proposal, but it does run out on the thirty-first. Pat, you want to give your time clock?
Yes, but can I just, this lady, Mrs. Christiansen, she wanted to address the board regarding her tree.
Oh.
Yeah, it was on my list. I didn't know you were here.
Okay.
So you, you have, you're just building this house there, right?
Yes, on Thirty-Sixth South Street, just east of Mulberry.
Beautiful place. Been in there last week.
Next to your brother.
Okay, so. Can I leave you?
Sure.
I've seen.
Just so you have seen. Okay, did you have copies of these? Sorry, they're not better ones. We're in the middle of moving, we're moving next to. So my husband Jeff and myself are doing, obviously, a lot of site work on the property, and we had Meg Crawford come to advise us on some landscaping, and some advice on we're having the driveway, the crushed stone put down and shaped and all that. And we have to remove the apron that's there. There's a hazard where, at the edge of our property, where it meets the church's property, where the sidewalk comes up about three feet, not three feet, about a foot, or so, maybe eight inches. And so we were asking her advice, and she looked up and said, well, that elm tree is crowding the black maple, it's pushing the roots up, which is why the sidewalk's so high. We're trying to level the sidewalk. We'd like to keep the blue stone as much as possible. It ends up a very expensive endeavor to do. So we're asking that we can remove the elm tree that's there, and grind the roots down, and level the street, sidewalk, not the street, so that when we do this work, we're doing it once, and not having an interim solution to try and deal with the hazard, and still have it raised above where it should be, to create a level walkway. So we're not doing it, we're only going to do it once. Let me put it that way.
I've been, I've been there today, looked at, and then there are two trees, each one probably eighteen inches in diameter, being within two feet of each other.
Yeah, it's on, you can see it in the picture there.
And on top of it, I think one of them hangs over the electric wires.
Right. The branch, one part of the work we're going to have done is having that branch cut so that it doesn't rest on the wire. The tree person feels that, and Meg also, feels that if we cut the end of it off, it will lift off the wire. It's just a very heavy limb. That's from the black walnut. That's there, but you can tell all the branches are all intertwined. They're really way too close to each other. But it is the elm that's pushing the sidewalk up. So her recommendation was to come and ask if we could have it removed, so.
Has it gone to the tree commission?
No, we just got that today, right?
But is, well, the first question is, on whose property is it? It looks like it is on your property, right?
It looks like it is. Well, that, it's an interesting question. I think it's on ours and the church's, because our line goes right through the middle of that line of trees, along my driveway. But I've talked to Father Peter, and he is fine with it, and will pay for the sidewalk. We'd have to remove two sections of the sidewalk that the roots are under, grind the roots down, and then replace that sidewalk, and then we're going to do a driveway apron, and concrete sidewalk to the blue stone on the other side of the driveway. No, it's our driveway.
And you propose to pay for the removal of the tree?
Yes. And I already have the estimate, and I submitted the application already to do that.
It had been submitted to the, as soon as I got it, it got sent to the tree commission.
Up today, you mean?
No, no, no.
No, on July third.
July second.
Or July second.
May not have met since then, correct?
They have not met. You know, what I might want to request, just because we're doing this work now, and I'd rather plan and get it done, as I said.
And Meg Crawford has suggested that, right?
Yes, she did.
Well, I make a motion to allow him to remove the tree.
I second that.
You have to, this is what we were talking about before. You have to fix the sidewalk, you have to cut the roots, and then the tree's probably going to die anyway. And it's going to make the other trees live longer, better, healthier life.
And Meg has recommended which of the two trees?
The elm tree.
Is the one to take?
Yes. And she said it would make the black walnut healthier, and we'll take just the limb of the black walnut that's on the line.
They're going to hate the black walnut, just so you know.
I know, you can't grow anything else around it. Everything I've suggested, you can't have that near a black walnut.
Black stains.
So, anyway.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You should have said something while we were talking about the trees before.
We always let the, our guests go first.
Oh, I didn't realize, okay.
I mean, we know you're here. We thought you were just interested in other topics.
Okay. I used to be on a board of ed, we didn't do that, unless we, well, under certain circumstances, we did. Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Pat, you want to give us time clock update?
Yes.
What are you looking for?
Mrs. Christiansen's paper.
Oh, it's over here.
I had contacted six different time clock companies, and I had received quotes from them. I had sent, scanned them and sent them all to the board, so that you should have them. The prices range from one thousand two hundred seventeen dollars and eighty-five cents to thirteen thousand six hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-one cents. These would be placed at the water plant, wastewater plant, and the street department with having the capability, me being able to go in to get the time clock information. They would be biometrics, varying from face recognition to hand punches. I have referred it, and I have spoken to our IT, Jim Jeffries, and he had recommended us staying with the same time management system that we currently have here in the village hall, which is a Imano. We have a finger punch, a finger scanner. Talking to Imano, they, this has been a big process, just so you know. Imano has a hand, hand recognition, but they're working on a facial recognition, which they hope to have come out very soon because of having the contaminants that are available in a water, wastewater, street department with dirt and things. They don't have a price or anything on that now. But currently, the Imano would be in the middle, three thousand five thirty-five.
Is that per?
That is, no, for all three. Yeah, that was for all three. And we would have to be networked, and talking to Jim Jeffries, we would have to have, and this is above me, because I don't understand networking, but you would have, you'd have to go through Time Warner, and we have a different IP address, and that IP address, we can have five different things on it, so that we can connect to it. And that would be about forty dollars a month extra for us to have that. But once we have that, then I can get the information from the different departments. So that's where.
So your recommendation, based on your research, is the Imano?
Would be the Imano, based upon, relying on what Jim had said, staying with the same software type of company.
Do you like, we like the software we have?
Yes. Yeah, it seems okay.
So is it thumb or hand or face?
It's hand.
The whole hand's a hand?
I like the concept of face, only because I'm anticipating the problems that can happen, having them at a dusty, dirty environment. Because that was, that was, speaking to Imano, that was one of their concerns. But they've all, the town of Rhinebeck has a hand punch down at theirs, and that's a street, that's a street department.
What did you not like about the first one that is a face reader?
Because it is through the cloud and, to the cloud, and you have to pay a monthly fee.
Oh, okay. So you have to pay the monthly fee for the IP address as well?
Yes, but that is, that's different. This is, it just was more expensive, it was like two hundred dollars a month.
Two hundred dollars a month?
It, it was, that's just off the top of my head. I know it was a lot more expensive because of pain. You all have all the information, like I said, I did.
Why don't we take, at least until the twelfth, for all of us to take a look at this, now we have?
Yeah, I just got it mailed.
Yeah.
An hour ago, so, an hour.
In terms of the, the front door here to the village hall, I had asked John to get estimates on what it would take to put a handicap button there, you know, an automatic door opener. So he requested three estimates, and he got two?
We have two. Forty-three fourteen and forty-five ninety-five.
Now, is that using the existing doors, and it just?
It's using existing doors.
Just puts the unit up top?
Yes.
And gives you the blue buttons, two blue buttons?
It's just installing the low-energy automatic door openers with two overhead safety sensors, two hinges for exterior door that are worn, and wireless press wolf switches and bollard post.
So how does a person with a handicap in a wheelchair get to it?
Yeah, it's, it's a post that has a push button that you push.
Oh, the post, it sticks out?
The post would be.
Yeah, there's a code, it's tougher, you know.
Right. It would be almost at the beginning, the beginning to the end of a railing.
Is that for two operators?
Yeah, because we have two doors, with the braids on. Yeah, it's for two operators.
For two operators?
Yeah.
And where the?
But only one side.
Right.
It is from New England Door Closure Incorporated. That was the forty-three fourteen, and Door Control Incorporated proposal for forty-five ninety-five. And they are from Wallingford, Connecticut.
You think at this point, we should probably look into replacing those doors, too?
I didn't get a price, we didn't get a price.
Well, we have those estimates. Why don't we look at the, at the bigger picture, and take a look, and we'll?
I thought we had, we did work on those a couple of years ago.
We did.
We had Melcardi.
We'd have to dig it out, but I remember it was.
Oh, you had a?
Yeah, it wasn't too long ago, we had, we, I don't know if we replaced them, or we had them refurbished, or what?
We had them refurbished.
So we can expand that discussion, let's take a look, and we have those two codes, and see if it's something we want to.
Because the other thing we have to do, too, is, now that you're making it handicapped accessible with an operator, you got to make sure that it's wide enough. So, because it doesn't make any sense to make it accessible operational when it's not clear. So we have to check this, maybe we can get with Nancy Clark or something, she can give us an idea. I think it has to be thirty-six inches clear. So that means when the door is open, it has to be clear from the jam to the side of the door.
The building inspector should be able to help you.
Oh, you're, do you agree with us? We have one of those.
Look at that. Okay, we already did the energy reports, E C S? I was like, we have that bonus, we can move along. Did you guys get a look at this escrow?
Yeah, I was a little confused. Don't we already have people doing this stuff? Like our accountant?
No, I think this, well, I was hoping that Chrissy would come and talk to us about it, but I think what she wants is a, it's just a structure, a virtual structure, where she has a virtual accounts, that she can move her money around easily.
It's like one account with subaccounts. It's all shown on one picture, instead of having ten different.
So she can go online and then move money from one account to the subaccounts.
Sorry? So I don't.
I don't know.
What's that?
I don't have a bond with that.
Hold just that one with Chrissy.
Well, it's exactly what you said, though.
What's that?
It is, it's one account, and underneath that one account, there's subaccounts.
The maintenance bond for Rhinebeck Commons. That's the project, but Village Greens, is that correct? Okay.
Locust Grove.
Yes, and they had some work that needed to be completed, and we held back money in the form of bonds, correct?
It was a one-year maintenance bond, I've been accepting as an education of the roads last year.
Right, and it's been, all the work's been completed. Nancy Clark has recommended that we sign off on it, so I will make the motion to do so.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Anybody got anything else?
May not approve.
Well, now we have water and sewer adjustments.
Go ahead, water and sewer adjustments.
Okay, we had, in the month of June, we had the eleven finals and ten new owners. I think this is mostly the gardens, right, Pat?
Correct.
We had a debit memo, a debit memo of two hundred and thirty-four dollars, where we actually don't charge the highway department, the town highway department, and any money for their water usage, or for their connection, the usage. We had another debit memo of fifty-four dollars for a person on an account, that we have an agreement for the last hundred years or so, that you don't have to pay. have an agreement for the last hundred years or so that you don't have to pay because the village had their wealth at that point. And we have an account number seven. Let's see, oh no, account number eleven oh eighty-nine, a, a debit memo of eight hundred ninety-one dollars, and that was because we, that's the, the town, the town swimming pool, which did not have used any water and was built in error. So they have not used any water, and they, they get, you know, a standard fee for the, for the, for the...
How did they not use any water?
Well, because they, they were not open yet.
Oh, okay, it was prior to...
It was just an error in billing, an error in billing. Account number seven, we had a software issue where we changed meters out and then it didn't get recorded correctly. So we had three entries of that to, to adjust for them, one of them for four hundred and ninety-eight dollars, one of them for three hundred and eight as a credit, and then another two hundred and forty-nine dollars as a debit. We had two accounts where the, the numbers were interchanged. So there were, the, the payments were applied to the wrong account. And the last one, we had four, four accounts where people complained they didn't get a bill. It turns out that, from checking it with the, with the postmaster, that apparently they had a new person delivering bill, and, uh, mail, I should say, and it was not, for some reason, people said they didn't get any, any bills. So what I, what we did, we, we just waived the collection fee, but still, they still had to pay the penalty that we had. And we, we looked, actually tried to get electronic payments and so on, but this is not, not feasible at this time. So we just have to limp along with that and hope that the post service delivers it down. The reason we thought it was a problem, normally, it's always somebody who says they didn't get a bill, okay, but they were all in the same area, in the southern part, so, so we thought that was an issue there. And that's all I have. This is, do you want this one?
Yeah.
And that's all I have. The next one would be sewer adjustments, right?
I don't, let me see, I'm sorry, I didn't see this before. So, there was...
Usually, the sewer adjustments are in line with the water adjustments, there's just three times more and fewer accounts. Right, Pat?
Right, hi.
You have some there?
I do.
Pat?
I do. Do you want me to read? We have seven new, seven finals, and they are all, except for one in, except for two in the gardens. We have one, two, three, four, five, seven new owners, again, all except for two in the gardens. We have a removal of a penalty, and, I don't remember the issue, I'm sorry. Meter change out, and it was an adjustment due to, it was a computer glitch, it wasn't a, it wasn't a, that it was entered wrong. The computer software had a glitch in it that has been since corrected in the meter change out process. So that's been corrected. There was a, another final and a removal of a penalty, and it was the twenty-five dollar collection fee. Again, it was because of the mail, and that was all.
So I'd like to make a motion to accept the adjustments as submitted.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes?
I checked the minutes, Pat, and I had, I could account for all the minutes except for the last one, one and seven one.
They haven't been approved, they weren't in...
Well, I didn't have it, even to look at it. That's what I'm saying. I, I've seen from, from March third through June twenty-fifth, I had the minutes written up, I had them actually in my hands.
Right, but it hasn't come to the board for approval?
Oh, I know that, Pat. But I, my question has to do with the one and seven one, which was not even written up yet. So we cannot, we, we probably couldn't even vote on this one, either.
Well, we can hold that one till next time and do it with this one. Do you wanna...
So all, except seven one?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought you were saying that, you didn't get all of them?
No, 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 I got, I got all of them, except this one, yeah. I'm gonna make a motion to accept.
Is that the motion?
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, and I have a discussion on this, sir. If you look here, we have from, from March third to now, that's a long, long time.
Right.
I think we should try to really get the minutes approved on the time we, on the time we have every month.
I thought we, I said to Pat, I thought we had previously approved a whole bunch of these, but she said no.
You know, we certainly have, because I wasn't here in March, and I know that we've approved them since then.
Yeah, we've approved minutes in the last couple of months.
Some of these weren't, I wasn't the one that took the minutes, they were Chrissy. So that's where the March ones.
Oh, these were some of the budget workshops?
Budget workshops.
Wow.
So...
Okay.
But irrespective, I think...
Yeah, we should plan a program every month.
In defense, I think we've done a, a pretty good job of getting the minutes brought forth before the board and to get them picked up and...
No, no, I'm talking about approving, not, not typing.
Yeah, it should be on the agenda every month, with the ones from, from the fire. There's no thought involved, we just wanna do it and move it forward. So everyone, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vouchers are downstairs, I think they're done, right, Pat? They're ready to go?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Okay. Anybody got anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Some...
All in favor?
Aye.